Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. This is a work session for all those participating. I wanted to explain how our work sessions work. They're very informal meetings. They're meant, as the name implies, to work out policies that we are working on or address concerns from citizens. So it's a very informal back and forth. All participants are encouraged to participate in the discussion. I do ask that we all be respectful of each other. And I'll try to move the discussion along, but I certainly don't want to shorten anybody's input. We just want to have a good thorough discussion. This is, I don't think there's ever been anything like this with the commission meeting with the full city council, Morgantown City Council, so I appreciate everybody that's attending. I would like to go around the room and at least introduce all of our guests, so starting with, sorry, Mayor Celine. Sometimes it's deputy, sometimes it's mayor, but Mayor Celine.
Brian Butcher, 7th Ward.
Ikse Vega, 3rd Ward.
Okay.
Bill Kowacki, 2nd Ward.
Kim Poz, Administration's.
City Manager.
Emily Moserelli, Assistant City Manager.
Joe Abogano, 1st Ward.
Danielle Trumbull, Deputy Mayor, 5th Ward Representative.
Okay, thank you. Prior to this meeting, Emily and Tom have come up with, I believe, about nine items we'd like to discuss, so we'd like to just kind of just go through that list and have a discussion on each of them and go from there. So the first item on the agenda is broadband infrastructure. For that, we've asked Morgantown Area Partnership, specifically Eric Carlson, has been helping spearhead that effort on behalf of the partnership. It's a county commission initiative, but the partnership has been instrumental in helping direct that. I'm very involved in that process, but certainly with my county commission work, I don't want to be a bottleneck. So Eric's been great as far as helping to move that process along. I'd like to have a quick discussion on where we are with that, and then we can have a follow-on as far as how the city may participate. So having said that, Eric?
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Eric Carlson with the Morgantown Area Partnership, where I serve as Vice President of Economic Development Services. As Commissioner Secora stated, we've been working at his and the commission's request to help make sure from county line to county line, whether you're in a very populated part of the community or in one of the least populated haulers in the community, that you have good and appropriate and affordable broadband connections. Because the 2020 pandemic, 2021 pandemic, really laid bare the fact that we do not have the infrastructure in this community that is necessary for students, whether they are in our elementaries or universities, and others that are fortunate enough to be able to work from home, to have the ability to actually work from home. And so we want to make sure that we take advantage of this time to determine what it is we need to be able to avoid having dark spots in our community. And so we, as a group, have come together and in February released an RFP for a strategic comprehensive plan for the county. And after reviewing 10 proposals, and I believe interviewing at least six of those as finalists, the group selected Ice Miller Whiteboard, a consultant firm out of Columbus, Ohio, and their subcontractors DLZ, an engineering and architectural firm, Lick Communities, a consultancy focused on assisting communities and developing a modern broadband infrastructure, and COS Systems, an international planner and operator of fiber networks, have come together to assist the community in creating this plan. And it's, on a timeline, we're looking at February as a time where the final report is going to be brought to this commission by Ice Miller Whiteboard. But in the meantime, we've found some possible outcomes focusing largely on the community taking a middle mile approach.
You can take your mask off if you want, Eric.
Okay. Appreciate it. We are looking at taking a middle mile approach here in the community, utilizing through some form the public infrastructure to create a middle mile network, which is, there's the long span, which is the trunk systems that go not only across country but across the oceans. There's the middle mile, which connects those major trunks to the communities at large. And then there's the final mile, where basically you go from interstate highways to arteries to local roads. And middle mile would largely be the arteries, would be the Don Knotts Boulevard of broadband to be able to have this architecture in place that would allow for the ISPs, the Internet Service Providers, to utilize these systems at a much less expensive cost to be able to go on and service the communities. And so this is a very high level view, as we said. We're still February before the final report comes out, but that seems to be the direction that's being taken. And in the meantime, starting to work with the ISPs, working with the other municipalities in the county as well. About four or five weeks ago, we had a great meeting in this room with almost all of the municipalities in the county. I think we're lucky enough to have Councilmember Kowacki, Mayor Celine, President on that as well, and others from around the community to talk with our folks that we're working with on this project. And also, a week from tonight is an opportunity for the community as a whole to hear from those folks that we're working with and also to give their feedback. The initial plan was that this was going to be a fully in-person town hall meeting. COVID rearing its head again has changed those plans somewhat. We have a URL out, and I've created a tinyurl.com/monbroadband, where you will be able to sign up to be a part of the webinar. But also, Commissioner Secora has arranged for the County Extension Office at 270 Mile and Park Lane to host an in-person viewing of this. So if you do live in an area where you cannot access the internet or you cannot access Zoom in a reliable fashion, that you will be able to be in person to see this presentation and to also be able to interact with the consultants. And that's something we find vitally important, to make sure that everybody in this community has the opportunity to have their voices heard on it and to be a part of it. Also, we have a survey and speed test that if you have not taken it yet, please take it as soon as possible. It's available at monfiber.suriszones.net. We will, in the next week plus, be pushing all this out again on social media to drive more folks to the, not only to the town hall meeting, but to the survey and speed test as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions. We've handed out a one cheater that I've largely gone over, but this is something that, you know, we really think is, it's vital to the community. You know, there's a lot of aspects with, okay, the remote worker program, yeah, you need to have great internet to be willing to move here from the District of Columbia to do your job remotely, but it's not just about them. It's about all the people that had to go to where the school buses were roaming around to be able to get Wi-Fi out to the community. And we want to make sure that if, for whatever reason, we're back in a situation or continued in this current situation, that we have the abilities in this county to have people work reliably and affordably from their homes to continue their education and continue their jobs.
Does anybody have any questions or any comments you'd like to make?
Just a follow-up a little bit. You know, I understand the middle mile, and I understand where we're going with that. What happens once that's in place? How do we encourage the connection?
With that, that's where the work with the ISPs come into place. We will look, we will work with those that are currently in town and possibly also look at recruiting others into the community that would be willing and able to go on to the middle mile, where they would pay a fee for service to be a part of that middle mile, but the work would already be done for them. One of the great aspects that's already come out of this is it looks like there will be a lot of access to private rights of way eneasements to be able to string this middle mile throughout the community, which will decrease overhead by possibly tens of millions of dollars county-wide. And so that will lower all of the ISP's overheads, which therefore we would either instruct or expect to see a decrease in prices that are paid throughout the community because their price to service home-to-home will be less.
Is this something that you count on the contractors, is going out recruiting that the ISP?
That's part of the contract that we have with Ice Miller Whiteboard, that they will be talking with our current Internet Service Providers and if it's felt necessary, looking at others.
And when, does your group meet next?
The group meets every other Friday. So we met this past Friday, so a week from Friday will be the next meeting. There is an open invitation to folks from our municipalities to join in those calls we've had since this meeting that we had, since the meeting we had in this room a few weeks back. We've had Sarah from the libraries join the meetings, and Mr. Jura, I think from Granville, has joined both of those meetings as well.
And what do you see as the role of municipalities in working on this?
It's going to be the same as the county. That's one of the things that, you know, we want to make sure that we have the opportunity to have a network in place that services everybody, whether they're in a densely populated area or a very remote area, that it would be access to the right-of-way to do that work, possibly utilization of funds to help get that middle mile put into place. But that's all, all of that is in pencil at this point, as we expect to see that as part of the final deliverable in February from Ice Miller.
And because we're more densely populated, there's always concerns with our right-of-ways and making sure that whoever is installing is going through our processes.
Oh, yes.
And so that we know who is wearing our right-of-ways and there's appropriate paperwork to go with.
Well, I wouldn't see any situation where there would be any unpermitted work that would be going on if that would be done. I can't imagine that we or whoever would be the group who would be contracting that work would be anything less than furious with vendors for doing something like that.
Great.
Jenny, we got to get to that point where we get to the whole comprehensive plan. Right now, our consultants are looking at the whole county and, again, taking all the information in, into account for existing right-of-ways that we can access, DOH right-of-ways, these right-of-ways that we've been negotiating across the county already. And that's part of this process. It's actually ahead of the game. As we've gone into this, our consultants have told us how easy to work with, the people in our county have been with, and when I say people, I mean entities, to negotiate right-of-way agreements so that we can do this. Every right-of-way that we negotiate, instead of going 27 miles, we can go six miles, you know, of fiber, and obviously that's going to be a heck of a lot cheaper. But it's our, it's our, our part in the process is to kind of get a comprehensive assessment of the whole county, which includes the municipalities. And then, once we get to that, and then how do we bring, how do we bring that infrastructure, that architecture to your front door and let each county or let each municipality still have, I mean, you still have ultimate authority to negotiate with the ISPs as far as who's going to get on that. It's going to be a partnership. We don't know what that partnership's going to look like yet until we get there. But, you know, that is our desire, is once, if we can provide the middle mile architecture and plan for that and save everybody, every municipality that's in this room the trouble of doing that themselves. You as elected officials probably are broadband, broadband, broadband all the time, but you're like, what's that mean? That's what the citizens are saying, you know, what's that mean? Well, we've tasked somebody to tell us, what's that mean for our community and how can we connect every corner of this community? And people from the city probably think, well, that just, they just mean the western end or the eastern end. That's not, I mean, we all who live in the city, and I'm one of them, you know, experience that on football Saturdays where you still can't connect to your TV because there's, you know, there's not enough bandwidth for, to handle the expansion. So, yeah, we have decent service in the city. I'm a Comcast customer. I probably have about as good as a service as you can, except for some fiber, there is some fiber in the city. But we have the western end that is not connected at all. And then we have the eastern end that's connected or told they're connected but still don't have the capacity. We've all found that the federal standard is 25.5, or 25.3.
25.3.
25 download, 3 upload. You cannot have, if your, if your family is at home during COVID, you know, and the mother and father have to work from home and the kids have to get online and do homework, you can't, you can't function. You probably even want, if someone else has watched streaming TV and you're trying to watch this meeting, you probably can't do that. So, and we're not setting ourselves up to try to get to the federal standard. We're trying to, we're light-years ahead of that. So I think that what we're doing is, what we, I mean, the community is doing, is trying to just, you know, we deserve better. What's the best plan to get us, get us world-class connectivity throughout this county? And then at that point, that we'll sit down and say, okay, this is how we can get this to your doorstep. You guys might have to, you guys might have to pitch in and help with getting it through your city or getting it to this area.
Sure.
And nothing's off the plate. We may have some areas that we just can't reach right now with fiber, where we may go, we may go tire-to-tire microwave and then fiber from the towers until, as a temporary solution, until we can run fiber. So this is looking at all those things. And the interesting thing about hiring a, essentially a law firm that's doing, that is our consultants, is they're also, I mean, they're experts in the right-of-way. Again, that was, right-of-way negotiation was supposed to be the follow-on work. So we have this consultant that's going to provide this plan, and then we have, we have a right to go ahead and do a contract with them for the follow-up work to help bring, you know, execute this plan. And they're already working on some of that stuff that we thought they were going to be doing in the execution stage. So it's ahead of, I mean, it may not seem like it, but in terms of, when we get to February, March, we're going to be light-years ahead of the rest of the state as far as, most people are sitting around trying to figure out how we're going to do this. And actually, the ISPs are even having this conversation, the ISPs have actually upped their game and are expanding because they're trying to get their piece of the pie in that, hey, if having this conversation gets you better service, you know, so be it, so.
And one other item, Mayor, that you mentioned concerns about right-of-way, one of the aspects that may come out of this would be a best practice of suggesting within the community that Digmont's policies get put in place in each municipality and the county as well. And that is where, if you do a road project, you bury empty conduit inside those road projects. That's something, when I was city official in Indiana, we did a massive road project. It was overall $120 million project. I joined the city late in the game, and just before we started construction, we need to add two 2-inch conduits to this 2-mile stretch so that in the future, fiber or whatever could be blown into that without risking hitting a gas line or a water line or another fiber optic that's already underground that we may or may not have known about. And that added less than $50,000 to the project. And so what has been seen nationally with Digmont's policies is oftentimes, even if you're putting the fiber in and laying in dark fiber, it's less than 1% of the overall project cost to do that and can save tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars later by not having to retrench or deal with times that a sewer line, a water line gets struck as you're trying to trench something in or trying to bore something in.
And we have such limited right-of-ways in many places that any time that we can bury versus having those poles above ground.
Oh, yeah.
There's a lot more space to work with for all the other purposes that we like to have right-of-ways for.
Yes, and anytime something's buried, it's a whole lot more resilient. You know, if it was a windy day today, that wouldn't bother something.
No trees, no trees on it on windy days like today.
Yeah.
Okay, well, as you can see, this is a very interesting topic. I've wanted to keep moving because we have a lot of things to talk to. Does anybody else have anything they want to say about broadband?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I think a lot of my questions would probably come further on, but if you can answer them, it'd be great. Or maybe it's just something that you can think about as we're developing. Obviously, I work in the industry. So like, are you looking at, when we're talking about how many ISPs have access to the middle mile, is there a consideration that you're taking of how many are going to give access within that amount, within any, you know, like?
We have not received a recommendation.
Not a recommendation yet, but that's something.
That's something we expect to be part of the plan.
And then, so there's, there's some misconstrued notions between a lot of ISPs and about the security of middle mile. A lot of them are very reticent to get onto middle mile because they're afraid of security concerns because a lot of people, a lot of different service providers can get into them. It's not so bad with fiber, but it's a lot worse with traditional coaxial cable. And so is, again, is that something that's being cared for? Is that something more down the road?
Yes. Yeah, that's something that's, it's into considerations. Obviously, we're expecting our experts to give advice regarding that. And as we've mentioned, we make, we sit in our, any of you are welcome to sit in on our broadband meetings and listen so that you say, hey, wait a minute. It may make you think about things that, okay, we as a city need to think about this going forward.
For sure. And so like, is the plan, and again, this is probably later down the road, is the plan more, we're doing fiber middle mile and then we kind of let our ISPs determine if it's fiber to the premises or if it's fiber to the node? Is that the idea?
We'll let the cities.
Right.
In conjunction with the ISPs and make those decisions.
So given the access to the middle mile, like, I guess maybe this is more a quick question of process or something like that. Would this, would like, how it accesses, how an ISP accesses the middle mile, would they then pay like a fee to the county or something like that for access, for constant rental of that infrastructure? What are you guys looking at for that?
Well, again, the assumption is, is there would be some nominal participation that you would, then you would use to, for maintenance and maybe further expansion of the middle mile. So, but we haven't, we haven't gotten any of those performas or any of that type of stuff.
I got you.
But I think the consultants are building this with, with the understanding that you got to have, you got to be able to maintain it going forward, so.
Yeah, you can't, you got to make sure they pay.
And Brian, I would encourage you to participate in our stakeholders meeting next week, and again, pop into any of these meetings or certainly, you're my councilperson.
Thank you.
You know, touch base with me if you have any questions. I'll certainly, these are the type of questions we want to hear.
I try to like, be a little careful about it just because I don't want people to get the wrong impression, but I think this is really extremely exciting. I think like, this is so great for so many people. Like, there's, you can't even apply for a job nowadays, and like you said, 25 megs doesn't cut it for you.
Well, yeah, and then the three, 25.3 is a federal standard, hopefully, but with the money that the federal government is putting out towards this, if they leave it at 25.3, they're doing a disservice.
Yeah, I mean, try just being in this meeting room on 20, we'd all be.
And please, please, push the survey out. Tell it to the next city council, push that survey out because we need that input. There's a lot of valuable information in there that, a lot of good nuggets and that will give our consultants information about where we truly are because we're finding that, you know, even where the areas are served according to the census tracts, where 60% of them aren't meeting that 25.3 requirement.
Yeah, and we're asking folks to do those surveys from their home instead of from their place of work.
Yeah, so do the speed test. Where's that speed test being sourced at? Like, what servers it is?
It's, well, it's a UCL.
Okay.
It's their speed test.
Gotcha. You feel pretty confident with it?
Yeah.
That's it, sorry.
No, great question.
Yeah, it was a wonderful question.
All right, thanks, Eric.
Thank you all.
So tell, tell again when your next, when your next meeting is.
Stakeholders meeting is next Wednesday night at 6 o'clock, in person at the Extension Building, or it'll be available virtually. And then our next broadband meeting is 2 o'clock next Friday.
Yeah.
And if you, if you contact Eric, so if the city decides who they want to be on those meetings or if any councilperson wants to be on any, contact Eric and he'll send you an invite.
Okay, cool. And it's in the URL for the next Wednesday night is tinyurl.com/monbroadband.
And the Friday meetings are at 2 o'clock where? Here?
They're all, they're virtual.
Oh, they're virtual?
Yeah.
I have a quick question. How long is the survey open for?
The survey is open till year's end.
Okay.
But we are still wanting to get as much, you know.
Before, right?
Yeah, yeah, we launched it in the summertime, and so the plan is with, you know, the students were not in town at that point from WVU, and so wanted to make another big push of it here in the next week or two with the town hall meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, hey, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
All right. Next, I'd like to, I'm going to jump a little on the schedule, just to, because we have guests here, they're going to speak on part of a couple items. Tom, which one do you want to do next?
The next one, since we have MUB here, we had come up with flooding and water and sewer concerns, and I know this is a major concern at this time. So if the MUB officials would come up and, this was, I think, yeah.
I'm still going to sit here for a minute, but I'm going to get the phone on.
Yeah.
Excuse me, that phone's going to ring.
Because this is probably the number one thing you've heard. This is the probably number one thing that you've heard.
(whistling)
Got it. Okay.
I have to leave in a couple of minutes, so I wanted to still.
Make sure he can hear everything as he leaves. Okay. If you want to introduce yourselves again, just so, to the public.
Yes, good evening. I'm Mike McNulty. I'm the General Manager of the Morgantown Utility Board. With me this evening is Mr. Ken Hacker. He's our Chief Engineer of our stormwater utility. Firstly, thank you for the opportunity to come this evening and participate. We really appreciate that. A couple of things, we'll start out on the flooding. The Board of Directors of the Morgantown Utility Board has authorized us to move forward with hiring an engineering firm to do a flood study in response to the events of June and July of this year. And so that is, that's underway. We've also taken the time to meet with West Virginia University, with their MS4 team, as well as West Virginia Department of Highways. So I thought those were, it was a very productive meeting, and we're going to be working together to see what we can accomplish in the future. One of those, we hope that we're going to be able to maybe partner financially as well, but we will be moving forward. We're here this evening also to present a project, the Popeino Run. This will be for stream restoration as well as sanitary sewer line replacement, and I'm going to have Mr. Hacker give you those details.
As Mike had said, my name's Ken Hacker. This Upper Popeino Run Sanitary Sewer and Stream Restoration Project focuses on the area between Willadel Road and Stewart Street, Stewart Street, sorry. There's an existing stream that runs through there, an existing sanitary sewer main that serves that neighborhood. The sewer main was put in place sometime in the early 60s. It's time, it's at the end of its useful life, so it is time for an upgrade and replacement. It's currently a petrified clay material. So if you're familiar with that, there are lots of 3-foot joints. It's not very watertight. It will accept a lot of INI, groundwater intrusion, clean water from the stream itself can get into it from time to time. There are lots of service laterals that are exposed where the main lies on the opposite side of the stream of the house or apartment duplex, whatever it's serving. So that service has to cross the stream to get to the main. The thought was always that these two projects needed to be completed concurrently. One will serve the other. You need to restore the stream, get the geometry of the stream back, better control the flows, stabilize the stream banks, and at the same time, replace the sanitary sewer main, increase its depth so that you can get these laterals that are now exposed and visible, underground, protected, eliminate that problem of those getting damaged during high-flow events. The project- The project, the two projects, we're looking at approximately 3,000 feet of sanitary sewer, 1,200 feet of stormwater upgrades in the area that go hand in hand with the stream restoration project itself, and then approximately 3,000 linear feet of stream restoration. The little handout that we provided, the blue line, if you can make that out, that is the stream restoration area. It's just above the stadium, it crosses Willadel Road and then follows Randolph and Amherst and ends up up at Stewart Street. And running parallel to it is the sanitary sewer main. The lighter green lines that are towards the upstream side of Stewart Street and then along the parallels Hoffman Avenue are the storm upgrade portions that will be included in the project. We have estimated, a preliminary estimate for each portion sanitary in the stream to be about a million dollars each, based on current projects and previous projects that we've completed. So, any, any questions about that or?
I want to ask, this would you say would be one of the projects that you have that's shovel-ready and what would be the timeline if we were to, if everyone were to agree to this, roughly?
So, the next phase would be selecting an engineering firm to do the natural stream design. We have worked on the design of the sanitary sewer. It's probably in the 60 to 70% range. We don't have any right-of-ways yet, although we have had a lot of communication with the neighborhood, which has led me to believe that those are going to be agreeable. We would have to go through the process of selecting an engineering firm, design permitting, which could be, take some time because of it being a stream project. I would say it would be potentially sometime 2022. We can start construction towards the end.
Okay.
I mean, there's, there's quite a bit of work that needs to happen leading up to construction, but.
Was it your thought that this would help alleviate a lot of that flood? Everybody knows in front of Shorty Anderson, that whole area's been.
So, it would, it would upgrade that area there. It would get the drainage up to a good design standard. A lot of that is part of the inherited sort of historic system that, who or what design was used to install that, we don't have record of. But yeah, it would get that up to a design standard.
Do you, I'm sorry, I'm behind the wheel here. Is that just the size of that system or when you say upgrade that, what are you upgrading? Just the material that's, I'm not sure what the stormwater system is up there by three inches. Is it all pipe and culverted?
There's a lot of it that is corrugated metal pipe that is deteriorated in some parts in the bottom in it, just like much of any corrugated metal in the area. The size-wise, yes, would be upgraded. Potentially location, routing, possibly, all that stuff would need to be looked at through the design phase of this.
Have you guys done anything with your subdivision regulations yet?
Well, those are still in, in process. They've, COVID kind of slowed down the discussion regarding that. So hopefully, as we're starting to develop a plan to have further that discussion, now COVID's ramping back up, so I'm not sure where that's at. But I think your question, Bill, is are you getting to, how much of this area is in the city?
Just looking at it, you're looking at probably 75% is inside the city, 25% is outside. I don't know exactly where the city limit line lays on Stewart Street, just looking at this map.
But if you had, if you had to make an assessment on, is it fair to say though that the area outside the county with how water runoff is handled is kind of exacerbating this problem or causing it?
It absolutely is adding to it. The development that has occurred outside of city limits there has added to this quite substantially.
Bill, was your question then in regards to that, how, how are we looking at this from more of a long-term?
Yeah, I understand what, a good bit of this was kind of a wild, wild west concept of development outside of the city that caused, or as you suggested, contributed to the problem. Again, I know you guys have been working on it, I just wondered what progress you were making going forth on it. I know your planner has been.
Jeff's the representative on the planning commission. Jeff, do you, have you guys been talking about the rollout or?
Well, yeah, they, they're still looking for, they still need it, we still need to have public hearings on it, which aren't scheduled at the moment, but I think they were talking November, maybe December to start that process. But I, it was last week's meeting that it was touched on a little bit, but there's no concrete set timeline yet. They're just moving forward, still getting input from, it's all online, the proposed regulation as well as instructional or examples, videos of what they're talking about and they're still receiving input on that. So encouraging anyone to go online to the planner's website and you can, you can review all that, but, and they're still seeking input from private citizens or groups or developers. But then they'll have the public, we'll have the public portion and then move forward.
But not to get too, I think that's relevant for this because, and again, I wasn't, I didn't hear, read the paper or hear any decisions. Has the city decided that they're willing to fund this project?
I think it's, it's start, yeah, I shouldn't ask, I should ask.
The city council met last night regarding the ARP funds, a portion of those funds were agreed to, the city council agreed to help fund a portion of the Pompano Run.
Right.
Okay, because when we, we had met with MUB probably about six weeks ago?
It was after the June event?
Yeah.
On June 13th, it was the week following June 13th, I don't remember that date exactly.
Okay. So we had met to talk about this and MUB, to their credit, had come to us and said, hey, would you be willing to participate in this project? And we, we, we as three as a work session, we said, obviously, we're not making decisions here, here in a work session, but we'd be certainly interested in this. Because again, we acknowledge that over, we only have 20%, 25% of the area that's affected, that's in this, but we do acknowledge that probably more than most of the problem comes from, from our border. So we're trying to take a comprehensive look at that, acknowledging that. We're done, we've done some of that with like our Orphans Road program that we did today. But we acknowledge that we need to have a seat at the table. We said back then, we want to have a seat at the table. This is kind of what we were waiting for is to kind of have, you know, a head nod from the city that we're in, I think that we can have that same discussion. However, we need to formalize that. I would guess that, Mike, however, that needs to be formalized based on behalf of the city and us so that you guys have the thumbs up to go ahead. Obviously, we don't make decisions here in this meeting, but if there was some sort of acknowledgement that we could take up in our, in our regular meeting, we would do that. And, you know, so at least you get the assurance that the project can move forward and start hiring your consultants.
I have a question and I think this, this kind of maybe pulls some of this together. So all of this area, I'm assuming is within the Pompano watershed?
Yes.
Now, is, and we, MUB is part of, I guess, the city ordinance is with MUB, is tasked with creating a stormwater management area and that's where stormwater fees can be assessed to any of these, or any of these areas that are outside city limits included in that stormwater management area that are contributing stormwater management fees that are going towards updating and addressing some of these or is it cut off at city limits?
It does not, it extends, the stormwater fee extends beyond city limits. I can share you, share with you that CMZ file that shows our watershed. It is basically the ridge line at the top of Idlewood Drive, so everything that falls or drains towards this area is currently being assessed a stormwater fee.
Yeah, can you share that?
That's, my understanding that if the watershed is in the city, you're responsible for the, MUB is responsible for the whole watershed.
For the portion that extends beyond, yeah.
Okay.
Good.
So, in the design of this upper Pompano Run improvement, in what respects, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of room in there for natural storm design or a lot of room to kind of slow down the water, let the water absorb in that area? Are there places where benches are being created or where areas that the, that the water can, you know, move out onto a plateau and sink into the ground a bit before it, or are we pretty much just channelizing it?
Certainly, we're, we're going to be limited with what we can do in this area, but part of the natural stream design that I have been, experienced with is in-stream structures that go in place that help slow down the water, stabilizing the stream bottom as well to prevent, you know, 30 or 40 years down the road, being back to where we are now, where your stream has deepened, your sides have eroded off and you get this really sharp channel that just speeds up the water. So.
So you're slowing it down, but still in the channel? Like, I was wondering if somewhere behind the Colosseum where there's sort of a little bit more space, if there was an area where it could be slowed down a bit?
Not, not in this, this area, there's not.
Yeah, it's very narrow.
It's an urban stream, exactly. You've got, there's a public right-of-way that almost follows the existing stream path as it is. A lot of those adjoining properties to the stream are backyards.
Yeah, they sure are.
There are several places that have structures up close to the stream.
They sure do.
A lot of that would have to be looked at in this natural stream design. Part of that would be putting in a high-flow bench, see if your normal flows, a high-flow bench, and then you're gonna have a flood area that will be designed for a certain rainfall event, but that all comes out in that design process and what, what you have available.
Yeah, so as much as you can slow the water down up there, it'll help, because a lot of people are concerned about downstream of there with recent flooding and so on.
Yeah.
And recent work that has to be done at the, the Illinois Center and so on.
Those two.
These two, okay. I'm sure you've heard the complaints and this won't solve all the flooding issues that we saw in those two.
No, no.
And even tonight coming in here, I'm like, we could be in this meeting and it could be, it could be.
I had the same thought.
But it's good that, it's good that we're starting to take a comprehensive look at all of that and try to address these issues. Not necessarily addressing the symptoms, but also trying to look towards the root causes, so.
Do you, this is a quick question. Do you have any idea what percentage of your sewer system is still clay? Because it seems like most of those at this point are all failing everywhere.
I do not have that number in front of me. I know we do a annual report through the PSC, I believe it's within that, our best estimate.
Can you find that information? Because I know other areas that are still have some of that clay sewers, whether it be combined or just sanitary. It seems like that would be a good thing to work on, getting rid of that. And one of the things that came up in a lot of our survey questions was just, you know, the maintenance of some of those to make sure that they are working good. And you mentioned just with those clay pipes that they have water intrusion and water's getting in and also could have some stuff getting out.
Absolutely, we.
They just break over time too.
That would be, the ultimate goal was to get rid of clay lines, but, you know, that can be extremely expensive, but that.
Start one foot at a time.
Right, and this would be eliminating almost 3,000 linear feet of clay line, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
To follow up on that, I think some of the legislators and the governor's office have been asking us over and over again for numbers for things. So the numbers for if we did separate the stormwater and the sanitary sewers, numbers for upgrading types of pipes that are not desirable. And, and they're saying, you know, well, how much would this cost? Well, how much would this cost? And I'm going, we don't know, but we can find out. So, the, with the infrastructure bill, bill with the federal government, there, each of our legislators are all asking the same kind of thing is what kind of numbers we need to address, just, you know, just some piece of it, not, you know, they would love to know a whole system number as well, but like, what, what could we do that's shovel-ready or that's why this project was valuable is it's ready to go? But any other projects that we had ready to go, then when those funds are available, we can, as a community, jump on them.
Well, thanks Mayor, and of course, unfortunately, these are all great topics and we could probably spend hours on each one of them.
Oh, no, keep going.
We want to keep this moving. Thanks to MUB, you know, we're, we as a county and a city are so lucky to have an organization like this. I think this is the class of the state as far as a water sewer utility manager. Mike, you have a first-class organization and I really appreciate what you do for the citizens of this county. So thank you, thank you for bringing the project to us.
Thank you all.
Again, continuing to bounce around to take advan, or to honor the people that are coming to present. So the next item on the agenda is tourism. So Susan Riddle, do you want to come up and, I guess she wants to tell us, tell everybody about the new initiative?
Yes, I asked why we have put that down and I also noticed it was on, in the city's plan too, but we have an incentive plan that we want to get out that everyone thinks it's just for large programs, but we really believe the city could strongly benefit, especially in the neighborhoods on this incentive program. So that's why I asked.
Can you pass two back to, if you don't want, if you have to go all over the place? Here we go.
Thank you.
I, I know, I did want to trip with the grocery bags and groceries, but I have to show you that.
Oh, I know, you gotta rub them together.
I don't have the link anymore. Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. I really, Tom kind of threw a lot of things at me, so I kind of did an overview because I never really knew exactly all that we were gonna cover. So I have a lot of information on here, but first and foremost, to talk about the tourism advancement fund grant program that was established. That was established as a pilot program. The CVB had had it in the past, and I don't have a lot of information on here other than the link that is, let's see here, it would, well, I didn't have the, it's actually on our homepage. If you go to visitmountainercountry.com, you go over to more and it's Tourism Advancement Fund. It's, it's right, right through those links. But the, the program is, is strictly a pilot, but, and, and we continue to upgrade it. Essentially, it's open to anyone. It is a total $150,000. We initially set aside $25,000 of the $150 for small local events. Tourism is to bring new money into a destination which per the state law I have listed in here is, is at a minimum defined 50 miles away. That's tourism. It's not local dollars that are spent here locally. So for this particular program, the commission felt it necessary to go ahead and open it up because, you know, our grassroots, our quality of life, these small things that go on within our communities are, can be just as important to getting people back and engaged and out and attending things. So the small local events are defined as asks of $2,500 or less. There's some guidelines in the process. Anyone that submits an application, the applications are online, once they're submitted, they, we actually have a review committee of five volunteers that review the applications. What I do is, once the application comes in, I give them more or less a kind of an executive summary. They get to see the application, but I kind of give them the highlights. I also interview the candidates if there's things that are missing on their applications, which frankly, often there are. We require budget information, we required a lot of things because we're gathering a lot of data through this process so that we can continue to improve it. I do the review, send out the completed applications to the review committee, they review it, we actually do this all online. It's all done through our boardable platform, so it's a discussion and a poll. They actually get the application, they can either vote in favor of the ask as submitted, they can vote, for example, we had an application that was submitted and someone asked for an ungodly amount of money and they were a brand-new event in town. They asked, I think it was like for $35,000, okay? And I went back and I was like, okay. So looking at your budget, the guideline of 30% of your budget, $35,000 is kind of way over the top, so, and given that it was a first-year event, this event planner had no experience, no, we asked for a reference letter and some other things, but was virtually an unknown in the area. But he had actually a gold level. But he had actually a gold-level sponsorship for his event at five thousand dollars. So on those options, I said approve application as submitted, told him that it was within, over or within the guidelines. Or their gold-level sponsorship is an alternative, a five-thousand-dollar sponsorship. So it really processed that information and give the review committee options. They can always vote to table the application and hold an online discussion about it, or they can reject it. There, there's a number of options. And then, once they vote on it, we have all that recorded through our system. There's a complete paper trail on this. Then we contact the individual applicant and notify them of the, the review committee's decision. We, and, and then from there, we manage it. They get fifty percent upfront, and once they find, they sign a liability waiver. And I can go through the whole process, but the point is, it's open to everybody. We have actively, my, my team and I, we have actively gone out and we have, um, I've contacted Main Street Morgantown, I've contacted the International Street Fair, I've contacted, um, the, um, the Brew, the Hopson Vine. Um, we, we've actually gone out where we know that there's events that go on and contact these people and say, "Listen, here's an opportunity. You really need to apply." And there's a lot of people that have asked, you know, "Well, if I apply, is it really going to get approved?" I'm like, "It's a process." I'm not the review committee, we just help you with the guidelines. And it, and it is an extensive application, but it's, we've kind of made it monkey-proof. You read a question, you answer something, you give us, you know, it is free money. So it's not like it shouldn't come with some information to back it up. Um, I think pretty much that, that's kind of it in a nutshell so far. We, they have approved, um, it's like forty-five, fifty thousand dollars, I think, so far. Some events, some of the approvals have been, um, the Wine &amp; Shine Event. Um, the, there was a scavenger hunt that was a small, local event. Um, there was, the Cheat Lake Rigata was also approved as a small event. Um, we just recently had several applications. It's really funny, they kind of come in chunks. We had nothing really submitted and a lot of things being worked on for a while, and all of a sudden, we had like three or four applications that just hit submit. So we have work to do to get out there. And then, you know, once an event gets their first fifty percent, they complete the event, then they have to do a post-event summary. How many people attended, you know, th- those kinds of things. Um, and then, once we get that response, then we give them the other fifty percent. So, um, we're trying to beat the bushes.
So you have a total of a hundred and fifty thousand?
To work with.
To work with, and you've given out about forty or so?
It's probably closer to fifty right now. Another event, I mean, like where we have worked to attract events. So, um, one event that, that we actually did, um, I would say bid fees and event attraction fees, the AAU diving competition that was done, we went ahead, and that, that one ended up being about fifteen, fifteen-five, I think is what the number was. Another one was the American Legion Baseball Tournament that was, that was recent. And I, we ended up, now that one hasn't been approved yet, but it's going to, it's in the process of being submitted. Uh, things that came with the event, cost for EMS, which was about thirty-five hundred dollars, and then cost for transportation, which that call came in about five days before the event. And that was about another thousand dollars.
Are there certain things that aren't eligible?
No, we really haven't, but this is a pilot process. I mean, it is, the, the application itself has been revised. Um, as we, we're constantly taking feedback. Um, I got a call yesterday or today, and somebody said, you know, "I'm going through the process, I'd like to make some suggestions." I'm like, "Fantastic." The idea is that this could be replicated for any municipality that wants to put their own money out there. It, it is, it is already, I mean, we did this before, we just didn't do it in, in a fashion that was all online and, and adaptable under the COVID restrictions.
And made it small enough for small events...
Right.
...to apply for it. And that's what we want to do. And this is, again, this is a pilot, but we are talking about this as one year. We are hoping to continually do this, especially during COVID, and basically get people and events going again. And that's what our purpose is. And that's why I wanted to make sure you all were aware of it, because it isn't county, even though it's a county program, it's really for anyone in the city. I mean, I keep thinking, like, South Park Neighborhood Association. Maybe they wanted to do something, they could apply for it. And that's what we want to do.
Could, could a part of city government, like, could we apply for something in the, in the Warf District?
No, we, we are not making a government...
Well, does it say that or not?
I, yeah, I think it does.
I think it does, yes.
Oh, so it's not, it's not for... Not quite everyone.
Well, it's not for, it's, it, what is, what has been stipulated in the guidelines is it is not for municipal programming.
But to answer that question, Jenny, I mean, how many events does a city promote that they, you really don't run? You have some organization run for you.
Right. Like the downtown, well, well, hopefully, but like the downtown, you know...
So, but Main Street, Main Street Hit and Flag? You know, I just was thinking of our amphitheater, just because we're trying to ramp it up.
Well, that's what I was wondering, too, if the amphitheater...
And we certainly run events there.
If, so, if, if a group is, if there's an event planner, because this is the way that this has worked in other facilities, if an event planner is coming to town, and an event planner is holding an event...
Oh, sure, I, I understand that, yes.
That's one thing. But if it, it, this is not to, um, it, it, it's not to fill a gap in someone, in, in a municipal's programming function.
And county's the same way, we're trying to, yeah.
It's meant as a grassroots program.
Yes, it's city and county, so...
That's, that's fine, just check in the rules.
No, 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 and that's why you'll see that on the application, but go ahead.
I have a question. How much can, uh, what's the limit that a group can get for an event?
No more than thirty percent of their budget. We have not set a, a dollar figure. I mean, I've been very transparent with everybody. I'm like, "Listen, we need to spend this money, everybody, so apply, apply, apply." Um, and it, it's really been all over the, the, the most that a group has been granted so far, I think, is twenty-five thousand dollars. And that was for an event that was a hundred and thirty-some thousand dollar event.
Has the Botanic Garden applied for some?
Not that I'm, no, not yet.
Okay, we need to tell them about it, then.
So it is, so if a, a promoter or somebody that wanted to do a concert was having that at a government facility, they could apply?
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Yes.
No, that's exactly right. That's what we wanted.
Even if, like, we kick in as a city to make sure that...
Well, we, what, this is what we do. We get a complete budget, and we, it's really funny. The last one I had, I had a lot of struggle with because they sent me a rolling budget. And I said, "You know, no disrespect, I've been involved in this very, many, many years, and I've been a financial person for many, many years. I, could you please clarify the term 'rolling budget'?" Um, he's like, "Well, that's what I got so far." I'm like, "Yeah, no, we're not talking anything." Um, but we have them quantify, and we give them a boilerplate, okay? We have them quantify all the income sources. And I understand what, we've been in the events before. I get events are, are quite risky and can be very speculative. You know, how many tickets are you going to sell? What's your sponsorship income going to be? Um, do you have any donations coming from entities such as what you're mentioning? Um, all of that is, is part of the equation. What is, what are all your sources of income? And then, from there, depending on the event, want to know all of your expense items. Like, for example, if a facility is provided free of charge, there is no free of charge. It, there's a cost associated with that donation someplace or another, it just may not be something that they're actually paying for. That needs to be in the total budget, because that event would not go on without the use of the facility.
And we are monitoring monthly, we get reports. And let's just say you have five great events, we're past at one-fifty. We have said that we will reevaluate to consider, because we really want events started. So it's rolling.
It is rolling, it's a rolling program.
A rolling budget for it, but we want you to use it.
And to clarify, the commission encouraged the CVB to create this process. We appointed individuals to serve on that board. Uh, we do not sit, huh?
Is this funded through the county?
Through the county, yes. We do not sit on that board. Tom sits on the CVB board, so that's why he's, you know, the most knowledgeable about this. But we tried to make this as much of, let somebody else, we'll provide the funding, let somebody else make the decisions, kind of like us in the city do with the arts program. You know, and I think that's been very successful.
Susan, can I ask, um, what kind of timeline can an applicant anticipate from, you know, the submission of an application until they hear whether it was approved or not?
We've been trying to accelerate that. Uh, when we first had this in place, we wanted information sent to us sixty-day, at least. There's no good event that's planned on the fly, I'm just saying, right? But it's amazing what people will submit, because they're passionate about it. So right now, what we've been doing is, they usually are hearing, certainly within thirty days, our, our turnaround, because trying to get through everything, trying to get it all in place, and then back out to the committee and back, the shortest has been about two and a half weeks. So, and there also have been events, this is the other thing, because it took us a while for us to get this going. Um, and we want people to, like, like the commissioner said, get, get events going. So we have had some events that have applied and been approved after the event actually took place. I don't personally recommend us doing that very long. That was really kind of in this pilot, right, time, because it...
We wanted to get something going in the summer.
This is a lot, I mean, it's really funny, because when, when Commissioner Bloom first came to me about it, I said, "Well, I said, 'You want us to reinvent our Tourism Advancement Fund process? You mean to tell me you've done this before?'" And I said, "Yeah, but it really needs, like, it, it's a lot. It's a lot to manage, it's a lot to, I mean, there's just a lot of moving pieces." And I think, post all this, he's like, "I thought the hard part was going to be getting the money together, and then I tried to be very comprehensive." And I can share with you all the detailed documents. I mean, if you go to the website, it, it has its own landing page. That landing page, Emily, has more content on it, and it like breaks every rule, rule of ours than any other place on our website, because it's like information, information, information. Um, so it, it, I think it's pretty straightforward. And once people, there has, there have been some suggestions. And again, we're open to suggestions as part of the pilot process. But there's already been discussions with other counties that they're looking at something like this. And, and, you know, the money sits in a separate account. It, it has its own checks, it is its own review board, the whole nine yards.
Yeah, no, I, I, that's great. I just, I wasn't sure, because you were talking about this, and it sounded like it had been pretty thoroughly thought out, I guess, and I had never heard of it, so I was kind of surprised.
Right, that's why we were...
So, so here you go. So, um, when we went on the trip for Southern Airways, um, I had, you know, with everybody changing hours and COVID and all this, you know, everybody being distant, um, I had the opportunity to sit next to Andrew. And in talking with Andrew, I found out that he had not participated, or the city hadn't been participating in our tourism partner meetings that go on once a month, because we had them on Fridays, and you all are only Monday through Thursday. I, you know, with us down to four people compared to where we were, it, it hadn't crossed my radar, so I apologize. So this month, actually, this coming Wednesday, when I came back from that, I, we had a team meeting and said, "The tourism partner meetings must be moved from Fridays to a day of the week where the city of Morgantown can participate." So that, we run a monthly cycle, so this one next week's the first time that that's going to happen. So we, we push it out, we put it out through our social and all of our newsletters and, and whatnot, but we can't do enough to get it out to people, because of, you know, there's just a lot of people who are fielding, so...
So that's why we wanted at least get to, to know.
You mentioned data, and I was wondering, is that data that goes back to, like, the county and the city? Or is that data that y'all are just utilizing to see, like, how you can better the pilot program? Like, do we get any of that analytics?
We, we are, we are transparent across the board. So the plan is, I actually have a giant worksheet. It's very primitive, because it's been developing as we go along, because these applications are quite interesting. Yeah, um, and we haven't received any final reports on any of the events, which is them get, that's where the real data comes in. Um, and, you know, we're also trying to...
But that is public, and that, yeah, we more than will, I'm sure.
We're going to be making presentations. All that they've received so far is, we've had so many applications, this is how many, much has been approved. They haven't even gotten a number on exactly how many dollars have physically been released, because it's the fifty percent, and not everybody got me their liability waiver. I mean, it's, it's a dot and I's and cross keys process. So probably within the next two weeks, I'll have our first report. And I'm hoping people, when I start to see their data that comes in post-event, I'm sure it's going to be more of a work-in-process, because...
Counselperson Vega, that's a very good question. Uh, the, the information is really for them, you know? They'll, they'll report on the success of our funding efforts. Someone just hang up on that.
I think, I think Ms. Garnett is off the phone.
He must have hung up.
There we go.
Anyhow, it's for their purposes. Uh, they may report to us on how well the funding's going, but that we're certainly not the reposi-, you know...
Oh, I, I guess I was just wondering, um, if there was data on, like, how well, like, those, um, those things helped out with, like, tourism and stuff like that, or like the rates going up or anything like that?
Without going into detail, I could tell you, one of the things with the CVB, she has data on data on data that's...
I love data, that's why I, oh, yeah. And some people are really sneaky about it, that's why I wanted to be sure.
Things have really changed. No, that's a great question.
This is, this is your CVB.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's unbelievable, the information, she can tell you how long the person was on the page, what they looked at, what they're doing. And that's how we then change our formula. And that happened, what, two years ago, or were we really...
What, you mean as far as the data that we track? It's been around a really long time, it's just the emphasis hasn't been put on it to use it.
And that's what, yeah, we finally learned that, we...
Okay, so, but, but, I mean, um, I don't know that I put mine on here, but Susan at visitmountainercountry.com, anybody, anytime, we'll do our best. Or info at visitmountainercountry.com. They both get to us, um, and, and we're here to serve you all.
Thank you, Susan.
Yeah, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
As you can tell, Susan's very passionate about what she does, and we're very lucky to have her.
Could you contact the Bass Fishermen, they used to come here for...
I have not, but...
But I mean, that would be a cool, they're not going to think to ask you, because they're not going to know this program exists.
Yeah, well, we're working with any, a K specifically, and, and Andrea and Hannah, but K specifically, we've been contacting people that have been here in the past about coming here, um, this being a possibility. So, and also working with facilities. If there's facilities, um, that have space, that bring events in, letting them know as well. Because we, you know, we can't, we're only, we try and get to everybody, but it doesn't always happen.
Susan, is October twenty-third too soon for an event to be approved?
Absolutely not, no.
Okay.
When did this program start?
Um, about six weeks ago, maybe.
Okay.
Y'all are killing it so far.
I used this website when I was teaching tours.
Yeah, well, thank you.
You used to use this form for your own, for your own funds.
Yeah, well, and that, that got, that got sunsetted, um, probably in two thousand eighteen. Um, but yes, same thing, same concept, much different process. This is, this I'm proud of. The difference is, it's a lot of work. But it's okay, we're doing it the right way. I really feel we're doing it the right way.
Yep, that one.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, okay.
All right.
Because I feel better about having missed it.
No, that's why we wanted you to hear it.
I thought I was around for a long time.
No, 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 no.
I sounded like two years, I was like, dang it.
Okay, keeping this moving, the next agenda item is Airport Commerce Park. And for that, we've asked Russ Rogerson, President of Morgantown Area Partnership, to come up. Russ has, as, as the, serves as the President of the Morgantown Area Partnership. And in that position, he's also the liaison or director, or whatever you want to call it, to the Development Authority, so, Russ?
Thank you, Commissioner, and, uh, good evening, everyone. I have a couple of new, three new counsel, four new counsel people I haven't had a chance to talk with, but hopefully we'll do more of this in the future. But I appreciate the opportunity to talk about a really cool project that we're actually all doing together, so... But I, just, a minute before we get started on that, I just finished a two-and-a-half-day conference, annual conference for the West Virginia Economic Development Council. And the irony struck me, is I look at this list of what you have on your agenda tonight, how familiar that was, because that was, a good part of that was on our agenda from the economic development standpoint for the state of West Virginia, so... In other words, you're spot-on. So, uh, let's, let's keep talking about these things and, and getting them done. So we appreciate that, uh, very, very much. In fact, uh, one item that we spent the whole half-day on was sites. Site readiness, site preparation, and, uh, and information on those sites to consultants and companies looking to locate. Because, as we know, in West Virginia, sites are a very rare bird. And, uh, and so, uh, our... community is not necessarily any different than, than the rest of the state in regards to site, site readiness and site availability. So, this concept, called the Airport Commerce Park, or the I-68 Commerce Park, was hatched some ten years ago, and I think there's a couple counsel people remember this, and commissioners, and, but I'm not going to get into all the history and the details of that history, but basically, the city, the county, WVU, and the Development Authority got together and decided that extending the runway was a great idea, and how can we partner and make that happen? Lo and behold, it worked out well, there was land available near the airport, that was also suitable for moving the dirt necessary to do the airport runway extension, and there was the birth of the I-68 Commerce Park idea. Multiple things going on, mostly funding, and, and over the, over the years, and I will say in the past year, year and a half, we've actually had great movement and progress on both the runway extension, as you know, and therefore, the industrial park, or the business park concept moving forward. So, very excited about this, this is a really true example of collaboration, working together, and getting more than one turn of the dollar on a project. So, the result will be a thousand-foot runway extension, which will greatly enhance the airport and other issues we're doing, with being able to turn that into a, a commerce area in and by itself, and also the creation of a ninety-acre business park, right off of the airport runway extension, quite frankly. That exact amount of dirt and rock that's being moved and cultivated is, is actually completely under the runway extension process, and we're in phase two of the runway extension, and what I'm really excited about is phase three, because phase three is when you start getting into the point of moving enough dirt, where we're creating sites at the I-68 Commerce Park, and so that's what's exciting, because now, now we have to work hard in figuring out the layout of the park, what's going to take from a water sewer, all the infrastructure needs, broadband, roadways, and whatnot, and, and so the Development Authority is very heavily involved in that, and we have engaged the same engineering firm that you have on the runway extension, Baker International, to help us with that. We felt the coordination of their knowledge of what they're, they're removing for your runway extension, the city's perspective, would only enhance to being able to be most efficient, cost-effective, and also getting the grading done out of the Commerce Park. I don't know if you remember, about a year ago, we had a, was it about a year ago, we had the groundbreaking, earlier this year, earlier this year. I just remember Mayor Delaney running a big back...
Yeah.
Taking out a scoop.
We're not, we're not going to, we'll, we'll talk about that another day, but, but yeah, so, so we've been working hard on this park design. I do have a preliminary design of the park, unfortunately, it's not been approved, so I'm not sure I want to kind of share this for public consumption, but I, I thought I'd bring a couple copies, at least let you pass them around and take a look, give you some idea, seeing something on paper is always better than not. I made enough copies to do this right. You all seen this one, so I'll go quicker.
I also want to say that a lot of this happened, the city and the county were flagrante, is that the word, but we needed a point of someone who, to lead, lead us, and that's where a map came in, and Morgantown Area Partnership, and then we hired Russ, has really made a difference, because what has happened in the past, someone would come in and talk to Kim, someone would talk to Sean, but no one was ever working together, and I think, unfortunately, Kim knew all about this, because Bridgeport figured this out years ago, they knew how to do that, we didn't, and that's where this is, this is new for us, really, and it's, and it's really exciting, and I want to say, Russ and Eric, it's really made a difference, and we give it, when someone comes down, we give it to them, rather than us trying to answer questions, and I think that's a real plus, I don't know if Sean you want to add on to that, because you're the, you're our person there.
No, and it couldn't, we've had the red, the red team, which is the Extension Development Team, which is the Development Authority, the city, and WVU, that has been working together on this, but having a, a full-time director, once Russ came on, it became, we became more focused, and then the real, the real push forward was when Emily joined the team at the direction of Paul Brake, and Emily being an engineer added, has added, we've done more with her pushing this project forward, and, and, and Kim, you know, every, you're as successful as the people around you, and having good people like Emily around you to lead these type of projects, but this project has done more in the last year than it has in the previous ten. So, it really has got a good projection, there is a lot of opportunity for city and county collaboration, eventually we'll get to the point where we're developing a TIF district that will help fund a lot of the infrastructure in the park, and that will need to be, that will need to be a conversation between the county and the city to work that going forward, so, there's a lot of opportunity for us to, future opportunity for us to work together, but again, I appreciate Kim, Emily, Russ, all you've done to move this project along, it's, it's really been exceptional.
It, it's a great collaborative story, and, and we've just begun.
Yeah.
And that's, that's kind of the fun part. In fact, the irony of it all, if you really want the most printable information on the runway extension, you should go to futureofmgw.com, and you'll see a lot of information about the runway extension, and the reason I point that out is because the success of this project will be the success of that project, and, and so, for those of you who haven't perused the website, looked it up, that the futureofmgw.com is a great resource, because every time I get a notice that they're blasting, then I get excited, because that means more rock and then more flat land for us to develop as a business park.
And you can watch the videos of the blasting on futureofmgw.com.
Exactly, exactly, and then what I'm hoping is, then, we get into phase three, there'll be a camera on the actual creation of a business park. And again, this is a preliminary design, it's been through several, several iterations, but I wanted to show you just conceptually what a ninety-acre business park could potentially hold, and, and so, right now, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of five hundred thousand square foot of, of building, it is a usable of a ninety acres, there's around fifty-two acres of buildable space on that property, and we're most likely going to start in the, the back corner, based on the amount, the type of materials needed to be moved in order for the runway extension to take place, so, this will change, no doubt, because that's what happens. This is also a relatively flat piece of ninety, of fifty-two acres, just so you know. There is somewhere in the neighborhood, I think we talked about, a hundred-foot drop from back to front, so, it's going to be a relatively flat piece of ground, which is remarkable, to have that much acreage available. We haven't started doing any marketing, because, as I talked about today, it's about site readiness, not future site ideas, so, until we get to the point where we have a deliverable date on our first pad for this site, we won't be able to really market that in earnest. But I'll also tell you that having these sites available, the state's excited about it too, right, because they're getting a lot of interest, and as they become more and more competitive, we're like seventeenth in the country now, related to cost of doing business, we're starting to get recognized by national trade publications as a state, because of the cost of business, impact on business is getting more and more competitive, so having sites, and having one of the two growing areas in the state with population and, and our economy, and our quality of life, these are going to be in high demand, so, I say it with great confidence, quite frankly.
Questions?
Will it, will it be marketed under a particular name, like, as an innovation park, or a technology park, or some, are we souping it up when we get to the, to the marketing stage?
For the right price, Jenny, it can be nice.
That's right, because they're, they're going to be developed...
Not interested.
I also want to, want everyone to know that, even though we're getting the benefit of a flat site, we're still talking somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty, the twenty-five million dollars of, of infrastructure cost to turn this into a viable park, so we have, we have a road to hoe, but I'm confident with, with all the partners involved, and including the state of West Virginia, we're, we're going to be successful in that. We're also having some discussions around a TIF as well, so...
Sure.
But we think this is just the beginning, because, you know, having a developable, pad-ready sites in our community is, is just a huge asset, as more and more people are going to want to locate here, bring their businesses here, and, and grow the tax base, grow the jobs, and, and, and that, that, these kind of jobs are, I call them differential makers, because the folks that work in this park will be able to buy homes, and, and go to the grocery store, and all the retail stores, and the restaurants, and, and pay taxes, and do those things that are important to all communities in order to have that kind of economy, and also a more balanced economy, right? So, we always want to diversify, we want to continue to grow different types of jobs, and we have the university, there's a lot of opportunity coming through and, and from the university in that regard as well, and, you know, clean manufacturing, advanced manufacturing, whatever you want to call it, these kind of jobs are, are family sustainable jobs, and that's what we're really looking for to add and to continue to grow. We have a lot of great locations in our community, throughout the county, but this will be a business park, and, and we're going to be heavily focused on jobs and, and growing them here for the city of Morgantown, and the county, and the community as whole.
What are we looking at, Russ, in terms of the type of building, building height? What can we expect?
So, basically, if you see on here, the, the engineering firm have put some labels on here, which are just strictly that, labels, two stories would be a max, you know, we're not looking to make this an office park, we feel like there's a lot of office space available, and spots available throughout, you know, the area, we're looking this to be more of a single-story, most two-story mezzanine-type construction, it'll be high quality, this will be, this will be very similar to, to a park that you would see in a major metropolitan area, that has that look and appeal and attractiveness, we're a mile from Interstate sixty-eight, I-68, you know, and we have the opportunity to expand that, we also, we have acreage behind it that we like to see as this park fills up for us to pursue, so, you're going to see, it's going to have green space, it's, it's going to be for areas for the employees to be able to walk and, and do some of the things, it's going to be a modern business park, and, and one that, that I think as, as elected officials, you can be proud of saying that you had your, your finger on that, helped make that happen.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
As most economic developers, I'm going to recollect what I handed out.
What's the strategy behind not having it be like four stories?
Well, if you're looking for manufacturing, if you're looking for that, that type of job producer, quite frankly, they're not doing it in multiple stories, the only thing that would go four stories would be more office, office type of product. Most manufacturing is actually a single-story, twenty foot, six, thirty-foot clear, pure span buildings, things that where you can bolt equipment down, and you can move things around rather easily, so height is not a, unless you get into plastics manufacturers, where they have silos, the silos may be tall, but all manufacturing, twenty-six-foot clear to thirty-foot clear is, is ideal.
Thanks.
Thanks, Russ.
Thank you.
Okay, so next on the agenda, actually, the next three items on the agenda are all items that the city asks to be put on the, on the agenda, who would like to lead that discussion? Is that you, Emily, or Kim?
We're going to share.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Floor is yours.
We're a good tag team coming in here. You know, Russ, I really appreciate working with Russ, I've worked with a lot of economic developers around, and, and it's, it's not often you find somebody with the, the people skills and organizational skills, and also has the technical skills, and so I really appreciate working with him. The other thing that I would, I would say is that I've been around a lot of economic development over the last thirty-five years, and, and I, and Russ and I can speak to this, because we're, we're kind of from the outside coming in, I, I've been here now nine months, can you believe that, Mayor?
No.
It's gone quick, but the point I'd like to make is that I've never seen a greater example, and everything we're talking about tonight is really an example of this, I've never seen a, a greater example of, of city-county partnerships than I've seen here. I think we see things differently here, and that is that whatever's good for the county benefits the city, and whatever the city does, it benefits the county, and unfortunately, in some areas where you've got, you've got this kind of a protectionism, you don't see that, it's almost like if, if a city succeeds, then somehow it diminishes the county, and I, I've never understood that, so we have that, and I'll tell you where, if we want to go to the next level, we've got to add a partner to that, that duo, that, that relationship, and that is the private. If we can, if we can learn to, and we are, we, we've, there's some real great examples going on that we can't talk about, but if you combine city, county, and private enterprises working together as partners, can you imagine what, what's possible? And that's what this is all about. I am, I, I was asked to speak a little bit about the downtown, and it's really strange that I'm doing that, because most of you know more about the downtown than I do, but I see it a little bit differently, and that is that there, there are several things going on that I think in the end are going to come to, to really bless our, our downtown, our business district. One is that historically, we've had multiple groups, and somebody alluded to this earlier, multiple groups doing the same thing, everyone doing their own thing. Well, there is a, there is really a readiness for, for those groups to kind of coordinate and collaborate and work together, and that's absolutely essential for this to be, be successful. From the city's standpoint, city, city council's been very supportive of the efforts that the city has been making to try to improve our downtown from a, from a visitor standpoint, from a friendliness standpoint, and so, if you look at the, for instance, we certainly, the city over the years has been very committed to trying to keep it clean, and, and I, I'm the first to brag about how clean our downtown looks, I mean, it's cleaned every day, and the sidewalks are clean, we've tried to power wash the sidewalks this year to, to make them clean, the, the flower planting, there's none, none like Morgantown, we have some in other communities, but I noticed in most of those communities, the flowers were down three weeks ago, you know, once school starts, the flowers are gone, and the flowers are just gorgeous around here, and it adds so much to, to the downtown, but, but deeper than that is, how do we help, recently, and, and this will go into what Emily's going to talk about too, we, we took very seriously, city, with city council's direction, the idea of including, receiving community feedback when it comes to how we, how we decide where ARPA funds are going to go, and there was a community survey that was sent out in August, August first, it's not going to be a six-month survey like Mub was doing, it was, it was a one-month survey, we received five hundred and forty, and over forty, almost five thousand responses from community members as to how their input. Let me just say that overarching neighborhood and business development, IT, and, and other, and, and other main components was the issue of downtown revitalization. Almost invariably, it, it was amazing, it was astounding to me how the community sees the downtown as such an important, important part of who we are, and so, as a result of that input, city council approved last night a, a really robust grant program to help businesses who have struggled, new and, new and existing business who, who struggle, who need some addition, additional help to get up and running and become vibrant again in the downtown area, that's huge. Number two, one of the biggest, the other overarching issue was, what are we going to do with making the downtown safe and clean again? And so, the city council took some really, and you heard some about it tonight, took really strong measures last night in approving a, a, a certain category that would allow... really strong measures last night in approving a, a, a certain category that would allow mental health and social service nonprofit agencies who operate in the downtown area to be able to relocate to an area where we create a one, one-stop shop. And both the county and the city have been really active in the, in the revitalization of the Ramada Inn area. Well, if we can, if we can move the services to an area where it concentrates those individuals that need those services, then it, then it helps segregate the downtown from those services, and I think in the long run, it really benefits the community. So I, I just wanted to bring County Commission up to speed on some of those investments that we've made in the downtown as a city, that the county, I know the county is very interested in that. We talk about that all the time, and I, I expect that there's going to be, with the infrastructure bill coming out and next, next spring, we, we receive an additional six million dollars, five and a half million dollars. I anticipate that a good portion of that's going to go into the downtown and that this is just going to teach us where those monies can best be utilized. Any, any questions?
Obviously, you guys see Kim all the time, so you may not have any questions.
You talked about it last night.
You might, you might have questions.
Kim, no, everything you say is, is, is right on. You may not have seen anything that's like this anywhere else in terms of people working together, but this really is the fabric of this, of this community, of this county. And, and to your point about bringing private citizens in, we just passed a ordinance today, a grant program that helps work with some of these abandoned, abandoned roads to developments out in the community, where we're giving these private citizens the ability to come in and talk to us and help us help them fix, grab these problems and fix them. So, you know, that's certainly, the private part is, is very important. So, you know, this is, this is, this is the way we are. I'm glad that, I, I can see the difference from what's, what's your expertise and what you bring to the, to the city. It's, it's been very welcome, and I really appreciate working with you.
I love working with you all.
Thank you.
And I'll hold my comments because I'm excited to hear, because I know, I know, Emily knows my comments every week. We, we speak weekly, and we discuss issues, very healthy discussions, but let's go, I'll let you go and.
No, you're good. So, you know, I think a lot of the downtown development that Kim talked about really goes hand in hand sometimes with the social services. You know, I can't say that a year and a half ago, I put a whole lot of thought into the social services we had in the town, and an encampment popped up, and, you know, I guess that, that then got put in my wheelhouse. So I spent a lot of time learning, a lot of time targeting people, a lot of time understanding the struggles that those who need social services are facing and the people that are providing them, the struggles that they were facing, and understood the different stakeholders and partners that were involved. And there was this idea of, you know, the old Ramada off Scott Avenue and what it could be and what they wanted it to be, and there were some people that were in favor and some people that were resistant. And this pandemic has really given that opportunity, a real chance at, at moving forward, and especially at a time where those social services really are needed. So during the pandemic, Bartlett House ended up having a major facility issue in their downtown and had to relocate, I think it was the week before or after Christmas. So not a great time to have to relocate people who don't have a home during the holidays, and with the help of some of the money coming from the CARES Act, we're able to relocate and open up the facility at Scott Avenue. A lot of people have made the commitment and understand how, by coming together, both as a community and as different social service organizations, that they can be stronger together. Another thing that, an example of how that's helping is, you know, we have, the city has a special committee on unsheltered homelessness, and the topic has been brought up, well, you know, where are we going to be doing the cold weather shelter this year? The one church that normally does it is not able to run it this year, and without hesitation, reached out and said, how can we make this work at Scott Avenue? How can we make sure people get transported up there whenever it's cold? How can we make sure that there are beds? And everyone was just jumping at the, the gun to get that going. So obviously, with now the help of the ARPA funds, we are looking to continue that support of some of the folks that are up there, working with Health Right to also see that moving up there, and that's really going to further the development opportunities in the downtown. There are a number of social services that are operating out of the downtown, out of the downtown, and as they work to relocate those facilities elsewhere, that just becomes another, and those really were larger pieces of property and fairly prominent locations, so those really become available to continue the economic development downtown. I did want to touch on one of the other social services that are coming to Scott Avenue several months, well, I guess towards the beginning of this year. I approached the County Commission about supporting the Sobering Center while, from the outside, it may not look like there is a whole lot happening. If, for any of the folks that are on the future board, I feel like I probably spent about half of my time talking about stuff related to the Sobering Center, reaching out to folks about insurance, working on lease agreements. We actually have a potential executive director selected. The, the future board has identified that. We have not made that job offer yet, but we are looking to, to move forward. It's weird, though, as if anyone's been part of an organization, sometimes I call our attorney, I said, how do you pay somebody once you hire them if you don't have a bank account yet? So there's lots of things that I, I'm, I'm learning how to do, but we are looking to continue moving forward. Everything from, we've got our, our insurance stuff running. I, I contacted a local bank here and said, how do we set up that bank account? We've got quotes for furniture, so definitely looking to move forward. So I, I sometimes am, I like to consider myself an optimist in many ways. I am usually optimistic about how much I can get done in a small period of time, which is why I'm late for a lot of things. And I think a bit optimistic in, in my capacity to be able to kind of do as much what was needed to get this off the ground. So yes, for all those people that said the Sobering Center was supposed to be open in September, yeah, that was my goal. Obviously, we're in September, and we're looking to hire somebody, but, you know, still very much trudging forward, and I think we'll get in there and looking forward to being able to have that service, those services there, and have really had really great discussions with the hopefully incoming executive director and just seeing how those can really relate to the other services. A lot of times those are, there are, with addiction, whether that be alcohol or drugs, these other comorbidity issues that, whether that be mental health or homelessness or depression or anything like that, coping mechanisms that come along with something, the folks who may use the Sobering Center. So exciting to have that all up and running. And I think that's all I have on social services. If anyone does have a question.
If I could, it can respond, yeah. I, I really think the reason why Emily and I have, Emily, you know, have worked so well together is because we were thrust in a situation that nothing was getting done in the downtown in the sense of dealing with the homeless situation, with dealing with people who needed help. And I, I think it was right before you came, we had a group that the city and the county got together with every, we opened it up, and with Rachel Cohen, Jeanette Lewis, and Carrie Damasi, we sat down and said, it was getting cold, we need to get people in housing. And we had a goal that Thanksgiving of putting fifteen people in the homes, and we ended up getting fifty-five people into some sort of housing. And I think from there, we, we started to really work together and also learned, I think, one of the things that was frustrating to me was exactly what you said. We had a number of agencies, as when we all met and discussed, several were doing the same thing, and they were fighting for the same dollar. And we needed to realize that we had to maximize what was going on and do what was best for, you know, the individuals. And out of that, I mean, we moved forward. And, and I want to thank you because you took, and I'm going to say publicly, you took a hell of a lot of heat for something in the encampment, and I'm, I'm proud that you, we had your backs, and I want you to know, it was a difficult situation. But with that being said, one of the problems was that we were moving Ramada Inn, but we didn't have all parts together. And I, I want to tell you, I want to congratulate you all and the city too. I mean, you, you know, I go on, get on you, but when you do something right, I really want to promote it. And this support of looking at moving Health Right up into another area to make a comprehensive program so we can offer help, it isn't just feeding them, but it's offering them training and getting them a driver's license, getting them social security, the neat, the things they needed. We now are going to slowly able to do that. And I could say this as one county commissioner, that we look forward to, or I look forward to when Health Right moves up there, and there may be some help needed. I'm sure all three commissioners will be willing to see what we can do to put some funds to make your investment work. But I think the thing is, until we see what's going on and what they need, I believe at that time, you know, we will be able to help you. And I want to thank, I think it's a wonderful, wonderful move, and I want to congratulate you. You better get that on tape. Oh, it is on tape.
I will, I will speak very quickly to the city and, and state roadways. Kim and Damian Davis are Director of Engineering and Public Works, have been doing a great deal of work, meeting with the DOH just to get a little bit more control over the roadways, especially in the downtown, to continue to be able to more easily promote some of the activities that we want to happen, whether that be, you know, road closures for festivals, weekend closures, more outdoor dining, just continued expansion and continued use of, of those roadways, because they are kind of in the heart and soul of our downtown, and it's difficult when you have such major arteries that you really don't have control over. We're also looking to see how we can leverage some of the work that they're doing. There's a couple tap projects on Pleasant Street and Walnut Street, which are obviously major entrances and exits out of our downtown as those projects move forward. And then just seeing, you know, one of the things that we've been talking about is, that's great, we put in, you know, brand-new streetscapes and sidewalks and lights and trees, and we still need to take care of the, the road that, you know, looks like sometimes an earthquake went through. So that's something we're trying to see how that can be addressed until such a time that it doesn't need to be, where it can, where it lasts a little longer, because right now, you can, a lot of people, we would get the comments, just pave the roads, I don't care if they're yours. But right now, you, you can take it off and repave it, and you, you wait a couple months, and it's going to look like it again. So we were working with the DOH, and Kim, Kim, I think maybe has a little bit more context than us, and, and trying to also work with Debbie View, because sometimes the state likes to listen to them a little bit more than they do the city of Morgantown. So just being aware that, you know, we work, are working on having a little bit more control and, and flexibility in, in the work that we're doing with them. And there should be some pretty major roadway projects in the next few years. Pleasant Street, Walnut Street, Beachhurst Campus, all have projects up and coming.
And I can say, the county, I'm sure you're aware, the county has a annual program where we work with the DOH to address roads which otherwise may not be, be paved. They have the ability, DOH has a, the secretary has, Transportation has a discretionary fund, and they can reach into those funds, and, you know, when they're skin in the game, if we're going to provide some sort of a match, they're receptive to answering and addressing some of these problems. So what you get is a, an area that may not be, it may be four or five years down the road as far as the state addressing it, but it could be accelerated with, with that type of partnership and get those done quickly. Perfect example is Chaplain Hill Road. The city saw that, I mean, the city, the county saw that as, you know, you're opening up the Aquatic and Track Center up there, you have the major thoroughfare for all the buses that take our kids to school every day, and it was just the runoff, the ditching. We needed a comprehensive upgrade, so they, you know, for a little investment from the county, we were able to move that project forward so that it was paved by the time that they opened up the aquatic center. So again, as you're, you don't want to put more people on a road that's already failing. And I think we'd all agree that Chaplain Hill was, you know, in winter was a very, very tough road. Now, there's further developments that are planned for that, but we needed something to be done quickly as we're putting more people on that road. And that road is fairly accessible now, and again, it's very important, our kids go on that road. But there's two, two separate plans to further enhance it, because we realize it's not perfect, which are part in a development. Part one is a partnership with the developer, Westridge, to eventually upgrade that to four lanes. So again, it's those other partnerships that, you know, you, we can't, Mon County doesn't sit back and wait for the state to solve our problems. It works better when you bring solutions to them and say, this is what we're going to do with you if you're willing to work with us. Perfect examples are the Exit 153, which, you know, and we had a discussion with DOH a couple months ago, and we were talking about Exit 155 and the planning, and there had been some back and forth about, you know, whose problem the delay was, but it's a very complicated project. And I asked the Department of Highways, Secretary Burr was there, and I said, and his, his top lieutenants, and I said, what other, are there any other counties in the state where you got these type of projects, where you have the private, the developers that are doing, doing, you know, the preliminary studies, the design, no, no other, no other count, no other county? And if we weren't doing that, who would have to do that? Department of Highways. So again, looking at solutions and not always saying, yeah, you know, Charleston, when are we going to get our share? But instead taking, you know, solutions to them and saying, we're willing to work with you if, if, you know, we're going to, we're going to make it easier for you if you can do that. We have another development that's, that's, that's in process with the Harmony Grove Interchange, again, to open up a whole other side of the county, open up the industrial park to some major, major developments that we're going to be, and I'm talking about light manufacturing, that type of, you know, jobs to this area. And, you know, those are important things to bring to the table, not always just sitting back and, and waiting. So the city may be encouraged to, I think Tom did a copy of our agreement that we did with the Department of Highways.
Yeah, this was the Upper River Road, not the Lower, please. Not the Lower. But it was not going to be a priority, but the road was horrible. There was two schools there, we had the industrial park, and then all of a sudden, when we, we threw out the idea that we'd be willing to help them, all of a sudden, they found all this extra money. I mean, the money was not available at all, but once we became part of the solution, all of a sudden, that, yeah, like you said, we didn't even know about that other pot of money that the highway had. So it's just showing you that, you know, maybe that's something you might want to consider. The worst I can say is no, but I can tell you, they seem to be a lot more interested because you, you gave them some money or commitment into it. So that was just something that, you know, we're, yeah.
And it's a win-win. DOH is always looking for examples of partnership and good press.
Yes, they're looking for.
You know, everybody complains about the potholes and stuff, but this is, these are good, good feel-good opportunities to work and really show their value to the citizens. So. Anything else regarding these three subjects? The next item is recreation projects.
Yes.
Tom?
Well, yeah, what we were, I had two questions. One that we wanted you to be aware of, that we were approached because an individual wanted to, for us to build more facilities, recreational facilities. And we felt that before we're going to build anything more, we had to come up with an idea of what we had now. So what we have asked for, and we received several RFPs, and we're going to continue to move forward to look at the two companies that are going to evaluate what we have and where the needs are. And the reason why we wanted you aware- And the reason why we wanted you aware of it was because we want to make sure they understand when we say county, what you have too. So this Westover, Granville, and that's what we did 10 years ago when we got several, the program started. And I think it's a lot easier to go to the community and say, look, we've done this evaluation, here's what's needed, and hopefully, you know, you will support it in the project. Because a lot of times, say, oh, that's only these 25 loud people were interested in it. So that's something we wanted you to know that we are aware of that's going on there and you had kind of put some things in there about any recreational projects. I guess the question is, the big question we keep getting asked is where are we at on our levy with the ice skating making? Thought that might be, this might be a perfect time so people could hear where you're at so we can move forward on that question.
Sure.
Would you guys like to speak to that?
I can give a a brief update.
Yeah, just a brief would be just great. Just.
You want to go to the mic just to make sure everybody can hear you?
I'm a proud.
Cause I'm sure you hear the same thing.
I'm on the Bow Park Board and I don't run Bow Park and, uh, they they have a contract with Michael Mills and not the city. But, um, I I have been working very closely with Melissa Wiles, the Executive Director of Bow Park, on the Ice Ring Project. Um, we had, um, very briefly hit pause to consider, uh, some different scenarios. Obviously, when the uh, levy first passed, uh, I think there was, um, some ideas of what was going to be able to be funded with the levy. Obviously, as, uh, the design, uh, went moving forward, uh, the the cost of the Ice Arena Project came back uh, much, much higher than we anticipated. So, uh, we really stopped and, um, did kind of a deep dive into the options, what, uh, kind of the pros and cons of the different, uh, things that came through, all the stakeholder input. Uh, we are, we are starting back up full force. Um, our designers, uh, the Mills Group have all the information they need. They know, uh, the budget that we are looking at and, uh, they are, uh, working on, uh, not, they're working on kind of getting these, uh, final, not final design that you would go to construction, but final designs. It says, this is what we're looking at. This is, uh, how everything is gonna be laid out. This is where we anticipate the costs are going to be. Uh, give us the the green light and we're gonna go ahead and move into construction documents. So, uh, my understanding is that might be the October.
They are supposed to make a final design presentation to the Bow Park Board at our October meeting.
Yes. Um, so, uh, looking forward to that kind of funnered design from like a master, uh, level planning standpoint at the October Board Meeting, uh, which I think will be really exciting. And, um, we were able to really work with them and work within the confines of what we think that can be supported by, uh, the bond, uh, that we're looking at moving forward with the bond to be able to go ahead and, uh, construct that. So, uh, eager to to get that moving. Um, from an actual construction standpoint, uh, I guess, uh, Bow Park did some work on the humidifiers or chillers.
The chillers. Yeah, I know you bought some of the chillers, right?
They did some kind of equipment that actually seemed to, uh, be a a better Band-Aid, um, on some of their, uh, work. So, um, I think probably more realistic, uh, trying to make sure that no, no season is missed. Uh, this is not a guarantee of any timing, but a little asterisk there. But I think they are, uh, they're obviously anticipating, uh, keeping the ice season open for the, uh, 21, 22 winter and then I think even the 22, 23 winter, and then it'll go into construction in very early 23. Uh, that is also to accommodate another major recreation project uh, that is going on, uh, with the replacement of the Marilla Pool. Uh, and that is anticipated, I believe, in the 22, uh, 2022. So, uh, two major projects to update those, uh, recreational assets, uh, that are enjoyed by city and county residents alike.
I think Mills Group is currently concerned about some material availability and also some construction availability. So they are recommending to the Bow Park Board that we plan for a late winter next year. So it would be the beginning of 23. And we're looking at not losing a season. We would close the rink maybe a month earlier and plan to open it a month later, but still maintain a relatively full ice season.
Yeah, otherwise we were ready to go. We were really looking forward to starting.
Yeah. As with everything right now, the materials, it's just a concern.
And the cost of the materials.
Or availability of the materials and the cost of the materials. And that was just on the advice of the Mills Group.
Okay, good.
And and to clarify this, again, what we're looking at is, uh, we had an individual that represented one of the nonprofit soccer organizations and they came and wanted to talk to us about, okay, so what facilities, what's your plans for improvements in the, in the county? And why can't we have, they they kept referencing Sean here. Why can't we have Shaun? Why can't we have Bridgeport? And and legitimate question, why can't? But before you decide what you need, you really need to find out where you're at. And we do have a lot of disjointed and we're trying to fix that, you know, in regards to, there's, there's Bow Park and you have Myland Park and then you have the Aquatic Center and they're all kind of doing their own thing. But really somebody to come in and do an independent assessment of where we really are in the region and and what would the market bear as far as, or what's the need for another all-purpose field or another softball field or another, you know, indoor basketball court, those type of things. And we're looking at everything, really trying to take an inventory of what we have and then look at the area and then what the real, real need is. So.
So you say you have a contractor in place already doing that?
We've had somebody submit two.
Two bids.
Two, we were going to, we, we decided that if we, if we went forward to this, that we would do it as a grant to this organization to go out and 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 we told them they had to find three bids. So they went out and got three bids and brought back. Two of the, one of, one of the bids was way out of the competitive range. So, we were looking at two. And right now, we're going to have a call with them and kind of make, do an evaluation on, you know, what, what they're, what they're going to do. And then we're anticipating funding that, that, uh, that, uh, study. And then again, that study is not just necessarily of county property. It's just the whole county with a big C property and and the region.
You gonna take into consideration WBU?
Yes, yes, yes.
But we wanted it independent because what has happened in the past, and I will say 10 years ago, we had it slight, it was done by WBU and, you know, there was concerns that wasn't slighted towards, you know, what they wanted or something like that. So we wanted something completely separate.
No, are you, are you including WBU facilities?
Oh.
Are you looking at the WBU facilities? Yeah.
Yes.
But what can be used?
I was gonna say.
Better open to the public.
Looking at what can be used by the public.
What can be used by the public? That's how it, how it's, and and one of the problems, and I've been here for years, and one of the problems, we've always lived here and the public felt, W was here, we're gonna use their facilities. And it was always a given. But with NCAA rules and changes, they moved away and we have to, need to provide for.
Talk about opportunities. You know, the the W Ballpark, the W Ballpark, there I go. That's Mon County.
Oh.
That is the Mon County Ballpark. And, you know, we actually have a grant program where W pays us a certain amount every year for, uh, which we fund all that money right into a a fund. That we fund community events held at the ball field. So, you know, Susan was talking about her events, but this is totally separate. You can petition the county at any time and say, yeah, I want to have X event and I want to have it at the ball, at the ballpark. And and we have a fund that will fund that. Uh, those are just as, you know, generally there, they tend to be athletic events, but it could be, it could be, uh, movie night, you know, on the infield, you know, those type of things. You can do a lot of different things in that facility. So, uh, again, that's a, that's a county, that's a county piece of property. That's a county, uh, our county inventory. That's something that we need to be used more by our citizens.
And I think it's important to understand, um, that with our size of a community, it doesn't make sense to have all of these duplicated things. I mean, honestly, we have more pools here than I think most places do and 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 splash pads and all those things. And I think it's great. And and I go to all of them and, you know, playgrounds and everything else, but they're, they're expensive to maintain.
Yes.
Um, and there's always something newer and better. And then people are wondering why my stuff isn't newer and better. Um, and I, and I think it's important to kind of understand the uniqueness that each of those bring and that they don't need to all be the same everywhere. And I mean, I think even looking at like the, the playgrounds that we've been working on, all the different playgrounds really have their, their different niche and, you know, kind of almost like age that they're geared towards and, um, and the same thing with the pools. I mean, I I love the Bow Park pools and I also, you know, love taking my kids to the, the Myland Park Pool, Aquatic Center. So.
And I don't think a lot of people realize, and I just want to clarify, that the, the Myland Pool and the track, not one penny came from the government for the brick and mortar. Not one dollar. That was all done by the community. And a lot of people don't understand that because if you go to another community, they're paying taxes or levies or so on. And that's what people do not understand, that none of that, there wasn't one dollar in the bricks and mortar in that. And that, and then we need, we have to say that a lot because people think that's where all our money, city and county monies went to.
And and one thing that's important to understand, you may see this as city residents, but you may not have seen it before. Uh, we just hired a, um, a director of our, to, to oversee our three county parks. Uh, during COVID, I mean, I'm on your rail trail all the time. I can get right on the rail trail from my house, go to Pennsylvania. I do a daily ride to Pennsylvania and back. Um, it's packed. The parking lot there on Van Vors is packed every day. It's just great to see everybody out. And the parks have flourished during COVID and a lot of people just now are seeing the beauties of some of our parks. Uh, we stole one of the city's, uh, I know, I, our, um, director, JR Pesco, used to work, uh, developing the Bow Park Trails. And now he, he has done a wonderful job at Mason Distant Historical Park. A lot of people don't realize that. There's, it's out there. Three hundred acres and it's just beautiful. And the number of trails, I mean, it's just, it's incredible. You ought to go, and people ought to go out and see it and be like, every time someone goes out, they're like, wow. And he's done such a good job with that. We hired him to oversee all of our parks and make them kind of brand them to, to, you know, to fill niches. We have Chestnut Ridge, you know, that's, that's, you know, has the, the sledding hill and has cabins. And we have Muffley that predominantly, uh, you know, 4H uses. But people think it's a 4H, it's a 4H park. No, it's a, it's a community park.
Has the county ever considered, uh, extending the paving of the rail trail up towards Pennsylvania? Also the part that I use. Just helping fund because, I mean, that part is not paved. Basically, you get, uh, so far.
Yeah. Well, I guess Dave and I were on the rails trail and sometime, I don't know, there's always been, some people like that it's paved, others like that it's the crushed rock. And I think that's, I don't know how to answer. That's a, that's a great question.
Are you talking like the sheepskin, you know?
Six miles from Star City to the line that's crushed limestone.
Right.
I, I, that's what I was asking.
Are you asking, is there interest in paving that six miles?
Yeah.
I don't think, there's a real, there's not interest. I mean, honestly, I agree with you that, that, a lot of people are upset that you're, it's paved. And we're like, why? Because they don't think it's, I don't know, it's not rustic or what? I don't understand.
I don't know. Um, we're going to, um, uh, north of Pittsburgh at some point in the next three weeks and we're gonna be on a trail that's, the 50 Miles is all paved and that's its claim to fame. And people write it up in fancy, you know, magazines and stuff that it's great because it's all paved. But I think sometimes runners like it not paved because it's a little bit softer on the legs.
Let me say that our rate paved rail trail has not been repaved once. And the lifespan of a paved section rail trail is 10 years. And ours is in excess of 20. So it's very expensive and difficult to get grant funding to maintain a paved section. Whereas for, I'm gonna guess, but a fourth fifty cost, we can maintain and upgrade an unpaved section. So.
And what you guys have done from like Van Vors to the Pennsylvania line with widening that, and again, I'm on it all the time, but I don't have any issue with it being paved or not paved. Uh, it probably helps from a environmental standpoint, not being paved. Says it's, you don't have as much water runoff.
It's a fifty fifty question. That's a good point.
That's really important that it's maintained. That the unpaved portion is maintained and rolled and taken care of.
But the point I wanted to make in bringing up that hiring of that position, one of the things that JR is charged with is working with Bow Park, working with all the other entities. So again, not being competition to really see the parks as part of the overall county inventory. Bow Park's facilities is part of the overall county inventory and working to, seeing areas, not, not focusing on where we disagree on whether you should have this facility here or whatever, but working on areas that we can agree with and make these entities work together. Uh, so, and I, I think that you'll see that in the next couple of years. You'll start seeing more of these parks and saying, ah, and you'll see more of that willingness to work with, with Bow Park and all the other entities out there to, uh, further that. We, we have a lot of, uh, working relationship with Green County. There is talk about, you know, extending the park, uh, access from the park into, into Green County and maybe bringing some of the trails down from that way.
This, Susan, did you want to go ahead?
This year in the Bow Park budget, we actually included a trails position. So, our administration is in the process of bringing that person on currently. So we will be back to high-class trail development and maintenance very soon.
There's also a million-dollar grant. Did you want to, real quickly? Yeah.
Couple of things. The, the Mount Neure Trail Network just.
Go ahead, yeah.
No one's gonna be able to hear you out there.
The Mount Neure Trail Network just got the, uh, their 1.1 million dollar, um, ARC grant announced last week. Um, and I worked with, um, Friends of Cheat and Downstream Strategies when they were doing that whole application. So that's a big deal. Um, and being on that board, that's also, you know, really kind of pulling that whole trail process. It's not just biking, it's also water. I mean, there's, it's pretty comprehensive. Um, and then in addition, when you're all talking about Bow Park and and other facilities and whatnot, um, we, we at the CVB, because we are your tourism organization as well, for the city, the county, all the municipalities between Mon, Preston and Taylor Counties, um, we work with groups. Um, we had several softball tournaments, uh, organizers that were coming to the area. Um, it's not, and and Granville's another location for girls softball. So, we, we work with groups that are baseball, softball, adult, children. I mean, it's a number of things when they're coming to the destination. We're working with these groups and getting them group lodging and other amenities and our, our travel app and all this kind of stuff. So it's, it's not just strictly facility-based, um, group sales. It's, if they're coming within our boundaries, they're fair game. And and we work with a number of them and procure new ones. So, um, I just, that's something that we try and work with all of the entities. And if there's opportunities or you know of people, please send them our way because we kind of put the cherry on top with individuals, trying to connect their, you know, all the things they want to do while they're here. It's the, it's the stuff they do in our community when they're not playing their sport and they have family members. That's, it's not that one more night, it's the one more dollar is where we all really reap the benefits. So, um, and I have business cards I'm gonna hand out here just in case.
I know we went over and I've, yeah, we're, we're seven minutes over at two-hour limit.
And we got one more, one more item. So unless anybody has anything else to say on recreation, the last item on the agenda is hard funds and future infrastructure projects. Tom, who was?
I, I don't know. I just, I guess you were gonna talk, basically you discussed the projects.
I think that was kinda God.
Yeah. I, I think, I think, you know, I'm sure you're probably wondering where the county is and Sean, maybe you want to say, but our, our number one priority has been and will be broadband. And that is where the, the most of our bulk of money is. We're trying to make that so the entire county is able to have that. Um, the other is some water and sewer projects. I don't know if you wanted to say anything else, but.
Well, let me, what was your question?
I was just gonna ask you how, how much your, uh, the broadband price.
I knew you were gonna ask that, but.
I almost asked whenever Eric was up there. I knew we were going long.
That's a great question.
Part of what they're, part of what they're charged with as our developer is we're gonna provide a couple pro formas. One will be, uh, you know, the, the cost of the network, uh, with the minimal right-of-way, uh, opportunities. And then if the right-of-way is panned through, here's that cost. Uh, they're supposed to give me a back-and-envelope estimate in November because we really need to make sure that we can, you know, we want to make sure that we don't spend that money. And there's ob- obviously a lot of other exciting projects that we want to work on. But we, we, from the beginning, have defined broadband as our, and we're doing that for the whole county on behalf of all the municipalities. But we've kind of defined that as our, our signature project that we're going to spend that money on because we want to make sure of when 10 years from now, we say, well, how well did we spend that money? We want to be able to point to and say. We want to be able to point to and say, listen, that was the impetus for this whole network, it being the most connected county in West Virginia, being the most connected county in the eastern, eastern United States. So, um, we're, we're serious about that, we, we don't know what it's going to cost yet, so we don't know what we don't know. Uh, those art funds are great for broadband, though, because they can be used for matching funds. And so we can make those dollars stretch a long, long way, depending on what the matching requirements are. So again, part of what the, our consultant is doing is looking at a comprehensive array of grant opportunities. So we'll have a suite of grant opportunities, and again, a lot of those are based off of income levels. So we may have to, we may have to use raw dollars to, uh, for areas where grants won't cover. And then in other areas, use those grant funds as matching dollars to help bring that. So we're going to try to put that puzzle together. Uh, we really won't know the bottom line until February timeframe, but we're, we're going to have an initial estimate around February.
And has there been even like?
I mean, I'm sorry, around November.
Order of magnitude type of?
I've always had the number of like 50 million in my head.
Yeah, and there's two pools of funds that we're also going to look after, um, the federal level, and Manchin and Capito have said that they want, they like our project. And we're way ahead of a lot of other, I think we probably are the leading project in this area in the state. And the other is the governor, who has, I think, 150 million.
30 million.
130 million. And I know that that's one thing we're going to be working with our delegates to go after that funding to make this part of the project.
And I hope I'm way off, I'm hoping that number is 20 or, you know, 30, but I don't know.
We don't, we don't know.
Eric, you've been involved in projects, I mean, I don't, you, if I had to hold a gun to your head, wouldn't.
Well, I, I would say, and I know we're not ready to publicly talk too much about the right-of-way work, but the work that has been done particularly by Mike Fortney with Mecca 911, I think will save us, as I mentioned, in the, uh, possibly eight figures range, because it, it won't be, we won't need that procurement, and we'll take shortcuts, so we won't need as much, uh, as of the actual material and construction because of having straight lines to places. But, yeah, it's, it's going to be in that eight-figure range totally for what it's going to be.
Um, it's, it is, as, as was noted, um, with the convention in Visitorsboro, it is harder for us to have employees come to those Friday meetings because we're technically not open on Fridays. So, um.
Broadband?
I don't know if, I don't know if broadband could be at a different, different, different time, but I think that we can provide some representation even though it's Fridays, but it, it is a, it is a factor for us um, when things like that are scheduled on Fridays.
And again, we tend to, those, those meetings aren't as open-ended as these, like in terms of, there's an hour, a consultant has an hour to, to, you know, tell us where they're at, and we're pretty good about keeping it to an hour.
And it's all, it's online.
Yes.
So someone could do it from home with.
Yeah, so it's a real, just a real good opportunity to listen in and see where, where we're at. Um, you know, it's just very, very helpful. Um, so anyhow, um, is there anything else that?
Anything else, I mean, I can tell you this, since 1987, when I was my first year in city council, we have never, ever, I have ever been in a meeting where seven city council members, the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the three county commissioners have been in the same room discussing issues. And that says a lot about, to you all, and I appreciate that. I mean, that's never, never happened.
Thanks for introducing.
Well, hopefully, we can meet maybe next time over in city council after maybe three or four months, so we can see how the funds are going and what we're doing, and just keeping up in the communications. I think that's what we're hoping, yep.
Absolutely.
And I, I know you want to go home.
As you're, as you're, as you're working on, um, on COVID measures.
Yes.
Um, that might be something that in the future, we could collaborate on.
Well, we have been. Um, when we have county-wide COVID calls, we include the city manager and the assistant city manager. As we've talked about best practices, things that we're doing, things that the, the city is doing, again, we're, we're very open about trying to include everybody from a county's perspective to listen in to those meetings, just to kind of have an understanding of where we're at. We usually have Dr. Smith participating in those meetings, so that's a rare opportunity to have him and ask him questions. Um, so, uh, yes, we, we, we have been doing that.
Good, well, just, just.
We were having them almost weekly.
Yeah.
Uh, that, up until the time that, once the vaccines come out, you know, so we got to January and the vaccines are out and readily available. And we had, you know, we had other measures, uh, and then we kind of died off a little bit, but then, you know, we, we've, we've picked up when we're talking about different issues. We had discussions in the winter when, you know, neither the, the DOH or the city had the resources to scrape the roads and those type of things. So we, we tried to, um, we tried to keep coordinating.
No, no, I think, I think it's been great, I just mean with.
No, I think that's a great idea.
COVID's moved to kind of a difficult stage where everyone is so tired of different measures and, and yet, um, we have poor numbers, maybe hopefully getting better, but I, I just, um.
Surprisingly, it's the, the last time we were speaking, when we were all together, it was W V U students that were not getting vaccinated. They are doing great, they're at 78, 80%. That's not the problem. And anything you can do to help us promote people getting vaccinated, we would love. I mean, I, we really do need people to get vaccinated.
And that's, that's the main, that's the main thing that we're thinking about as well.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's something we need to look at.
If you figure out any special magic sauce or anything.
Well, I look at Joe, and I know Joe, the last thing he wants to do is do both home and also classes. I mean, that, that's crazy, we lost a lot of teachers in Mon County because of that, a lot of teachers.
Definitely. Anyway, I don't want to pull on the meeting, I just wanted to put that out there as, as a further issue.
Anything else?
Thank you for coming, you had a real late.
Thank you very much.